It's a special call meeting. We had this one come up that we didn't feel should be put off until the next meeting, which will be, I believe, the 31st. And I wanted to try to get some things done. I'm going to plug me on here. We're going to have the roll call. Commissioner Yauer, he's not here. Commissioner Rosales. Commissioner Dubning. And Commissioner Shumpert here. And I'm Richard Butler. So we do have the forum and we'll proceed with the business. Let's have Starland and I will pray in place. Lord, we thank you for these wonderful days here in Orange County. We thank you for the opportunity to be here, to serve the people of Orange County. We thank you for the people who do attend and have a voice in the way that their local government conducts business. Help us to do the things we should do to treasury-wise and the use for county's resources and in the service of the people of this county. In the name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a limited agenda and we're going to... I guess what we'll do is if there is any citizen input on any of the agenda items, we'll do what we usually do, which is as that agenda item is addressed, we'll ask you, we'll entertain questions, comments from those of you who are in attendance. The first item, number five, is discuss utilizing a fixed-price bid from contractors. Architects supervised construction methods for constructing the EMS facilities. And Herb approached me and after consultation with the attorney, the representative of county in construction contracts, it felt like that we needed to revisit this whole thing. And we've had some discussion with the attorney. The attorney is here now and I think initially what we need to do is to go, number six, go into executive session and let the commissioners have a brief meeting with the attorney and let him explain that as an attorney-client privilege communication to us. Then we'll come back here and we'll discuss it among ourselves and with the public that's gathered here and take the public comment on that. And we can decide if we'd like to have the attorney explain that to everybody here if we feel like that appropriate. First thing I need to do, if they have any kind of compliance or attorney-client communication with the governing body, I think we need to do that. So I would move that we recess to go into executive session at this point in time and step in the law, which for events. And then we'll return and resume the meeting. That's my motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We'll stand in recess for just a few minutes.
What section of the vote are we going in? Y'all going in executive session?
I'm not sure what the section is. I don't really like to do so.
It needs to be stated.
Okay.
Would it be possible, you tell us who the attorney is?
I'm sorry?
Would it be possible that you introduce the attorney?
Yes. Stand right here. Mr. Chapman?
My name is Jeff Chapman. I'm with the Chapman Firm. I'm a construction lawyer and I've been retained by the county to help them with procurement matters, compliance issues, and construction documentation and negotiation for a series of projects, this project being one of them.
And my guess is, when we get back, when we get back into session, we'll probably authorize him to just speak and give the same explanations to all of you that he's going to give to us. But I think we have to. We have to hear him first to make sure that that's the thing we need to do. I think it will be. All right? All right, we'll be back in just a moment. Section, by the way, the government code section in which we were... went into executive session is section 551.071, which takes the government code. As I was going to say, want to make sure we got that right. Anyway, we've had discussion with council and we feel like the best thing for us to do is have him discussing with you. So we're going to turn it over to Mr. Chapman and he's going to address here on these construction methods and which one he's advised us to be best for this big project.
All right, thank you, Judge Butler. Thank you all for being here. I'm going to go ahead and just tell you a rundown, basically, of what I told the commissioners and Judge Butler and your county attorney. So I was called originally to help the county draft the construction contracts for the CMAR, which is the construction manager at risk for the EMS building we're talking about today. When I was asked to do that, I called Herb and Judge Butler and I said, you know, I understand the commissioners voted in the last meeting to use the CMAR for this project, but as your procurement council and your construction council, I feel like I owe the county an obligation to discuss the other methods of procurement so that the county makes the best decision it can with respect to public dollars and public facilities. What I did in that conversation, and what I did just a moment ago, was explain to the commissioners that the construction manager at risk method is best utilized when you have your construction drawings and your plans in their early percentage of completion. Because that method enables a contractor who will serve as your construction manager to work hand-in-hand with your design professional to help value-engineer the project from a pre-construction standpoint and to bring the cost of the project down to within whatever your budget is or whatever the cheapest possible manner of delivery is. In this situation with EMS building, the plans right now stand at about 95% complete from my understanding. And it's also my understanding that during the course of the design, the value-engineering component has been handled throughout each successive phase of the design. So most of the work, if not all the work, that the contractor would do during the pre-construction phase has been done. Given that information, knowing the type of building we have, which is not, and the type of project we have, which is not of the most complex type of project, it would seem that if the county's overwhelming goal of getting a guaranteed maximum price for the construction as well as getting the building in the ground, it would seem that a different method of procurement would be the most advisable for this project. Given that information and having that discussion with your commissioners and your judge, we discussed using what is called the competitive sealed proposal method, otherwise known as the CSP. And the CSP method is one where the county has a significant amount of freedom in asking contractors to hard-bid the job, so you get a hard-dollar amount bid, but also asking them about their availability to perform based on a series of particularly selected criteria that the county puts forth in their advertisement for bid. In doing that, we can ask the contractors who they intend to use for subs, what types of material suppliers they intend to use for the project. We can ask them their experience with these types of projects and we can ask them things like how many jobs they've had that have gone over budget, how many jobs they've had have been delayed in time. We can ask for this information and judge the bidders accordingly. The other thing that we can do, which I think serves the county's best interest based on my conversation with your county leadership, is get a contract using the CSP method that has a guaranteed maximum price in the contract. So you will get a contractor who will give you a hard-dollar bid and will sign a contract that we will publish with our advertisement package telling them that this is going to be a GMP project. They will have to honor a guaranteed maximum price, which puts the risk of cost overruns and change orders on the contractor and not on the county. And I think what you'll see when you use that method for this particular project is that you'll get a contractor who can perform faster than a construction manager at risk because of certain types of bidding and subcontractor requirements that the CMAR has in it, in the statute, that the CSP doesn't have. You'll be able to get harder-dollar bids from contractors from the CSP. And then the benefit to the county that the CSP method has, that a traditional low-dollar bid doesn't have, and they are very similar, is that once you get your numbers back from your contractor bidders, if you find that you receive numbers back that are over-budget, you can still rank your offers in the level at which you prefer they use based on their qualifications. And then the statute allows you the freedom to negotiate with them on both the terms of the contract and the price. So for example, if you get a project bid that comes in and your lowest bid is 5% over your budget, you can go back to that contractor without having to rebid the whole job and say, "We need you to deliver this project for 5% less. Can you do it?" And they can say yes or no. And if they say yes, you're still good to go with the original advertisement and the original bid without having to further delay the process and rebid it. So I think the county will see that for this particular project, using the competitive sealed proposal method, given the freedom and the leeway that that method provides the county, will best serve the county's interest in getting this project built for the budget that you want to spend. And that's the recommendation I've made to the commissioners in executive session and I'm now making in this open session. And I'm also willing to answer any questions about the procurement methods that y'all might have for me.
Jeff, if I had to understand that we could, after we received the bids, we could basically select the contractor. And if we wanted to, if we're concerned about the pricing on the project, we could go to that contractor and negotiate possibly some modifications to the plan or some reductions in the scope of work if we felt like we were overbuilding it or building it at that level might be more money than we want. We could negotiate that down.
Absolutely. You can negotiate down both the cost and the level of the design. You can reduce the scope. You can modify the design. Under the government code, which for anybody who cares to go look at is chapter 2269, you have the freedom to do that. You can negotiate the price and the scope and the terms of the contract. Yes, sir.
Does that mean what you're saying goes that the commission's courts can also establish a maximum price for a building?
Absolutely.
So for example, for the EMS building, if the commission's court says the place is going to be $500,000, that's what they bid at? Is that how I understand this?
The way it works is you get your bids back from your contractor and you select your best contractor for your preferred price. And in the contract document that contractor signs, they will put into the contract the guaranteed maximum price is the $500,000, whatever the budget number works out to be. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? I would make motion that we direct that the EMS building be built using the competitive sealed proposal method that Mr. Chapman discussed with us rather than the construction manager at risk method that we previously approved.
I see.
All in favor? Aye. And carry.
So you're rescinding the original?
Yes. We're rescinding a priorization and changing the method we utilize. Next, item A is discuss approved/disapproved assignment of the abatement agreement from Mesa Real Estate Partners to ARC, GBLM, Mesa, 001 LLC. ARC, and this is authored by me. Those of you who are here will recall that one of the parties that have been given an abatement sometime back, a tax payment, came to us asking for consent to assignment of the abatement agreement to a party that is now Mesa Real Estate Partners, or to ARC, GBL, Mesa, 001 LLC. Basically, they were making an assignment to a different corporate entity within their same ownership structure. They had, we had at that time a discussion over whether or not they could do this, whether or not they had complied with the terms of the abatement agreement. They were taking the position that the time in the abatement agreement had been complied with, that there was no language in the abatement agreement that required any particular level of employment and that there was actually, there was a provision in that agreement that says that we cannot unreasonably withhold consent to the assignment. I got a copy. After we had that discussion, I got a copy of the agreement, reviewed it. We took no action and blasted it, by the way. After my review of the agreement, there is indeed language in there that says that we have to agree to an assignment or we cannot unreasonably withhold the agreement to the assignment. There is no language in the agreement that requires them to employ any number of local people or attempt to employ any number of local people. And the, to in order to keep their eligibility for this abatement, they annually have to certify to the county that they have applied to the agreement. The terms of the agreement basically require them to build a structure or make capital improvements in the county that are of X number of dollars. And they have certified repeatedly in the term of the abatement agreement that they've done that. It is my opinion, after looking at these things, that in reviewing the agreement, that they are entitled to have us consent to the assignment. I don't think it will make any difference. I do think it's a lesson that we need to learn about these abatement agreements. I think they need to be, the wording of those agreements needs to be reviewed very carefully to make sure that any expectations the county had, such as employment levels, in granting the abatement, is indeed put into the wording of the agreement. This agreement, of course, is several years old, but the wording regarding employment levels, employment of local people, is not in that agreement and there is no sufficient So, lesson learned is, let's make sure that what we think we're agreeing to is what we actually agreed to in writing and can enforce against the parties that are receiving these tax abatments. Let's make sure that we put language in there concerning outside audits of their use, I mean, or of their compliance with the agreement. And just be a little more careful about granting abatments. I would say that we also need to consider the fact that this county, people are locating structures here, people are doing things in this county because it's economically advantageous for them to do it. It is a center of Eagle Ford production and exploration right now. They're going to put those buildings here, they're going to make these investments here probably whether we grant an abatement or not. So I think the days of desperation for Orange County where we felt like we had to grant these tax abatments or people were going to pack up and leave and they weren't going to build and they weren't going to employ, things like that, probably had to close, at least for them. I think we, our county, its location and its ability to make money for people probably sells itself. I don't think we need to go offering giant tax rebates like this one was in order to get them to make these locations in Orange County. That's just my two cents. Anybody else have any comments? Ms. Rollins?
I would ask that you define reasonable.
Well, unreasonable would be, I would say, you know, I've dealt with a lot of contracts that is unreasonable, you can't unreasonably withhold consent. There has to be some reason such as that it would work in economic disadvantage to the county, that the company being assigned this has some kind of record of malfeasance. Some of that, and if somebody can hang your hat on and say that's a good reason not to grant this, you know, to grant this consent to the assignment. I don't, I'm unaware of any sort of, you know, block or bar to our granting consent like that. I'm too much aware of one.
I'm ready to hear it. The duty of your duty to the taxpayers of Orange County?
Well, I understand what you're saying, yeah. But I'd be, if I refuse to grant consent, if this court refuses to grant consent, we're almost certain to be sued over it and we'll be expending money and attorney's fees to defend against this lawsuit. And if they win, since it's a written contract, there'd be some chance perhaps that we could be held liable for their attorney's fees. I don't want to do that. If I was aware of any obstacle to granting the consent, any reason to think that it changes anything, it disadvantages the county in any way, I'd be willing to leave the effort to not grant the consent. But with the language in the contract, one I read, I don't think we had any good reason to bar it.
So in other words, this is written and there's how much we can know about it unless we want to get into the facts of it?
Well, I think it would be. You know, I think we're buying ourselves lawsuits. We don't agree to, yeah, I think, you know, to get into the lawsuit, you can engage in discovery and we can find out things. We'd scour what they did, we'd scour everything to see whether or not there is some reason why we could, you know, we would have a reasonable basis for denying consent. But to even get to that point costs money. You spend money discovering those things and you may not discover anything. You may find it's just another corporate entity that these guys have set up and there's, it's not going to make any difference to the county whether the current abatement holder is the abatement holder or whether it's the S and E that they're proposing. Either way, it won't make any difference to the county. If we find that, then we would unreasonably withhold consent.
And I have one question, which goes back to the fact that we still don't have any provision for anyone to go in and audit their books or audit their compliance with the term of the agreement. They, which it says that, you know, that they're required to allow us under its 5B of their agreement to come in and notify them that we're coming in to look and make sure that they did spend $8 million and that they are at least in compliance with that aspect of it.
That's correct. And we could do that. We could, we could get that from them. But they've complied with the only provision that says what they have to do, which is to certify to us that they did spend that much money, that they did make $8 million of capital improvements.
Well, I would agree that they certified, that they did do that by letter, but this also says that they had to provide access to inspection and to allow us to determine if they did spend the money.
You're right. And we, they have indicated that they would do this. And we have never had any kind of compliance audits or any else in the county to assure that they are doing that. I mean, I've seen their investment out there. I'm pretty sure they have spent $8 million in capital improvements, but we can make them show that. And if it was shown that they didn't, we could recapture. I guess my point is, the assignment doesn't close the door to enforcing the abatement provisions. We agree to the assignment, we agree to the assignment that there's still the availability, which we've been talking about, that we code-compliance also that we're going to get auditing these things and assuring that they spent money, assuring they've done whatever our agreements say they had to do. Pardon me. What we might do in future, thinking about it, is perhaps we can have some more language in the abatement agreements in the future that will call for the recipient of the tax abatement to pay for the expense of the audit.
I thought you just said you were opposed to abatement.
No, no, I'm saying if one is granted. I mean, I don't know whether we're going to grant any more, Scott, or not.
I can't imagine any circumstance where we'd look at this one.
I'm a little, I'm a little reluctant to say that that would be, but I'm just looking at, all right, if abatements are granted in the future, here's one of the things we need to look at. All right, you know, we would put that kind of agreement.
This was a foolish abatement at the time and we fought against it at the time.
Yep.
And, you know, without any abatement guidelines, you can't issue abatements. So I would suggest you never issue any abatement guidelines.
That's one way to do it, I guess. Yes.
Hey, one, and this is just a personal note that I've witnessed, as I'm sure most of you have. Is there anybody here from Select Energy today? No? Select Energy, I'm sure all of us are aware, is one of the largest players based in the saltwater disposal business in the county. By that nature, they basically tear up our roads more than anybody else in this county, the saltwater disposal. I can't recall any things that Select Energy has done to help us recover or repair any of our roads to any major degree. And they've gotten a tax abatement that's worth millions and millions and millions of dollars. And they, and my view, and I'm just speaking as an individual, these, Select Energy and several of the other companies that are destroying our roads do very little to help us maintain those roads. And they're getting away free. And I think that's, I think that's an abomination for this county, for them to make the money that they're making and they do absolutely nothing to help us maintain and repair the roads in this county, which are just, they just go away more and more every day. I don't care how hard Mike Wolden and contract payers or how much work they're doing, there's no way they can stay up with that kind of track.
We've all witnessed that. And that would be perhaps a good reason not to grant an abatement to one of those companies again.
The only one I can see is even considering would be one for housing.
Yeah. I mean, I don't want to, in a way, Scott, I wouldn't want to foreclose the possibility of giving an abatement to anybody for any purpose because I, you can't necessarily anticipate what kind of commercial project somebody might propose. It might be something that is not necessarily totally reliant on the energy business that's going on here and it could be something that you did need to lure them with. But I think in the future, these tax-abatting schemes, we've got much more skepticism.
We have a deficiency in bargaining. We have a deficiency in learning. We don't learn anything from the courthouse. We don't want to learn anything from building the jail. We don't learn anything from our mistakes. And I think that's what I've been trying to point out for several years now, that we need to stop and look back at what we've done and learned from those mistakes. James was here when the abatement was going on, and, you know, we just continue to redo the mistakes. And I think we need to stop and slow down and get input from the citizens and ask, you know, and then when there is a mistake, then we can all take responsibility.
I agree. All right, I'd make motion that we, based on the reasons I've given you, that we agree to approve and agree to this summary of the abatement agreement from Mesa Real Estate Partners to ARC, GBLM, ESA 001 LLC. Second. All in favor? Any opposed?
Well, I didn't oppose, but there's no reason to oppose because it seems like the prior people signed this thing, and if we oppose it, we're going to get in trouble and have to have a big lawsuit, so I'd say aye.
Okay. I believe that's all the business we have today. Oh, we have something on. Pardon me?
Get Pete's office, please.
We have supplemental notes that was posted late, but it was posted within the time period before our statute. I would propose that we carry this over to the 31st, based on our discussions, budget we're going to have on the 31st. And so I'd propose that we take no action on this. Discuss it with Pete, who is on the.
No action?
No action on supplemental items number one. And I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
I'll take it.
All in favor? All right. Thank you very much.